Those in favor, Chambers, Champlin, Colasante, Hopkins, Johnson, Luzon, Lyle, McQuaid, Phelps, Puleat, and Reynolds. And the last vote was to return to open session. That also was unanimous. Those in favor, Chambers, Champlin, Colasante, Hopkins, Johnson, Luzon, Lyle, McQuaid, Phelps, Puleat, and Reynolds. Thanks so much.
So before we begin tonight's recognition, I'm going to ask the school committee, when I'm done with this, to come to the front row so that we can watch our students from the Charahoe Vocal Select Group and the Charahoe High School Women's Group perform for us this evening. And I think it's a perfect recognition as we are on the beginning of Artissee starting Friday night into Saturday. So if the chorus director, Lynn Douding, could come up with all of our students, we will come down so we can hear the beautiful performances that we've all been looking forward to.
So as you all know, Artissee is coming. We're so excited to finally have Artissee again. And our chorus concert is on Friday night. We hope that you'll all come and join us. And this year, we're doing something kind of special, and our concert is called 100 Years of Broadway. And so what we've done is, we've started with the 1930s, and we're doing a song from every single decade. So if you love Broadway music, this is the concert for you. And we thought we'd do our little opening number just to get you excited about the concert on Friday night, 7. One thing I should have mentioned is that although these students are all in specialty groups, we call them, and practice after school, they are also members of the regular Charahoe High School Chorus, which has about 40 members, and they'll all be performing on Friday night. The specialty groups have, each have a song they're doing alone, but the rest of the songs, including this first one, will be done by everyone. And so it's really exciting concert. Tonight, we're going to recognize students for being selected for the All-State Chorus, and Mrs. Picard asked me if I could explain a little bit to you about it. So the All-State Chorus is sort of like the playoffs of Chorus, I guess, that's what we should call it. Students who want to be in it get a piece that is selected by the Rhode Island Music Educators Association, of which I am a member. Being a member allows me to sponsor students for that audition. And they get a pretty rigorous piece of music that they have to learn. I help them learn it after school on their own. And they have to sing their voice part against a tape that plays all the other voice parts. So if that isn't real sensible to you, it's like singing your, against everybody singing something else. And they go in a room with a judge, I'm not allowed to be in there, and they sing against a tape. They also have other parts of the audition where the judge hands them a piece of music and says, sing this, they have a minute to look at it, and then they have to sing it. And then they also have to sing something that they play, and they have to remember it and sing it. So there's several parts to the audition. And after that, they are ranked amongst students all over the whole entire state of Rhode Island. So anybody can audition that's sponsored by a teacher who's part of this organization. So there's students from everywhere. And then they are ranked on a rubric, and depending on what their score is, they either say, okay, everyone above 75, you're in Allstate, below 75, you're not. It's pretty cut and dried. And then they are selected for the Allstate Chorus. They do a few rehearsals after school, and then on the weekend of the concert, which happens to have been Sunday, this past Sunday, on Friday, they spend the day rehearsing from 9:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, and then they spend the day rehearsing on Saturday from 9:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon, and then they provide an amazing concert at Veterans Memorial Auditorium in Providence. It's quite an honor to be selected, and this year, we had five students audition, and every student was selected. Some of the students are in the women's group, some of the students are in Charahoe Vocal Select, but it's quite an honor, and they have a wonderful experience. Some of my students were talking about it and sharing some things this week of how they meet other people from other schools, they get to talk about what their school programs like, what our school programs like, they get to make friends of people who are interested in the same thing. And if you haven't ever been to an Allstate concert and you have time, go, it's absolutely amazing, the quality of what they produce in such a very short amount of time. So we're super proud of all the students that auditioned and participated in the concert.
Thank you, Ms. Douding, and a big hand for Ms. Douding for all her work with our students. November, Lynn was presented with a surprise song that the students worked on in order to thank Ms. Douding for her years of dedication. And I was lucky enough to be sponsored by Abigail at that chorus, and it was a beautiful event, and I want to say thank you to all the students and Ms. Douding, because that's what all this is about. You do this, and to be recognized tonight is important for me, because we really do value all of the hard work you put in, not just in your academics, but in your extracurriculars and in your music, because it highlights and engages you in what inspires you and what you love. So thank you all for such a beautiful performance this evening. So now, for no further ado, I'm going to have Dr. Kamala come up with Ms. Douding to help me recognize our winners. So we're going to begin with our Charahoe Vocal Select, otherwise known as CVS. And then we're going to go on to our Charahoe High School Women's Group, who have already performed, they performed first. Take off my glasses, because I have the wrong ones on. All right, so all Charahoe Chorus students who auditioned were accepted into the Rhode Island Allstate Chorus. They were invited, and they sang this past Sunday, like Ms. Douding explained. And I'm going to call up Rachel Lindalow, Chorus Select, grade 12. Maisy Dotson, Women's Group, grade 12. Virginia Keister, CVS, grade 12. Alain La Basiere, Women's Group, grade 10. Oh, Alain's not here. Abigail Fagen, CVS, grade 12. Being recognized for receiving a Silver Key Award for her ceramic piece, Monotone Ocean, at the Regional, at Large East Scholastic Art Competition, congratulations, Abigail. So, thank you, all of you, and then we're going to go on to our Art Awards, Rhode Island Art Anchor Awards, is a newly established statewide art show. So Charahoe High School had 18 students' artwork displayed, and the following students received awards. Finn Almagno Galouli, Anchor Award Photography, Finn. Caitlin Burns, Wave Award Self-Portrait. Blake Carbone, RIAEA Award Special Recognition. Liam Courier, Anchor Award Ceramics. Morgan Lowing, Anchor Award Ceramics. Morgan is also being recognized for receiving a Silver Key Award for her ceramic piece, Fish Out of Water, at the Regional at Large East Scholastic Art Competition. Madeline Lucier, Anchor Award Photography for Queen of Hearts, and another Anchor Award. Also got photography for Shine Through. Madeline is also being recognized for receiving a Silver Key Award for this photography piece, Shine Through, at the Regional at Large East Scholastic Art Competition. Next, we have Jack Manny, Anchor Award Photography. Evan Paul Medencie, Anchor Award Photography. Caitlin Wojcik, Anchor Award Mixed Media and Wave Award Abstract Experimental. Elena Frias received honorable mention for her painting Feed Me, I'm Scared, at the Regional at Large East Scholastic Art Competition. And our final recognition for this evening is Middle School Spelling Bee winner Luke DeFettal, grade 7, and runner-up Shaylee Hartman, represented Charahoe in the State Spelling Bee. Congratulations to all. Nice job, and I could all go home and do your homework, unless you'd like to stay for the meeting.
Okay, so now back to business. Too bad, that was great. Nice. So this is the time in our agenda where it's public forum, so those who want to come to the mic and speak on any matter, idea, whatever, that's not on the agenda, on tonight's agenda, so anyone wants to come forward. Okay, sorry. Donna wants me to remind you that you have to sign up if you haven't already. So it's Andrew. Andrew McQuaid, you have the floor, sir?
Is this okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. There's been a conversation around this budget that I have found deeply troubling. The gist of it has been a narrative from those who have advocated for more cuts, in addition to the 1.2 million already cut and against this budget passage, that those of us who have advocated against further cuts and support this budget simply don't care about or aren't mindful of our community's elderly, people living on fixed incomes, living paycheck to paycheck, and those in need due to job loss, insecure housing, or otherwise. Initially, I was troubled by this because it's simply not true. I know that this is not true about myself, and while I don't know all of you personally, my experience so far has only given me evidence that these are people who care deeply for their entire community, and one of the many ways you choose to show it is through service on this committee. But then I realized why it truly troubled me. This argument is based on a foundation that we can either fund public education, or we can support those who are in need on fixed incomes and our community's elders. That is a false choice. We shouldn't be fooled by it, and we certainly shouldn't accept it. You can call me naive or Pollyanna, but having lived in this community my entire life, I truly believe we can do both. This should not be an either-or scenario. If there was ever a both-and situation, this is the one it should be. We can, and we should want a community that can both support quality education and those who are in need. And then there are those who say that the superintendent and others are being emotionally manipulated when we share the impact of another level-funded budget on the children of this school district. They criticize community members who also teach in our schools and have spoken up during this budget process. Against their personal and professional experience, they say that they have a, quote, vested interest and benefit from the increased budget, end quote. And I'll give you that. On this, you are right, but you're wrong, but you are wrong in terms of your rationale and your reason. Educators see in their classrooms the impact of families who are living paycheck to paycheck. Educators see in their classrooms the impact of families who are living paycheck to paycheck or are homeless. And based on my experience, they have no interest in perpetuating this for any other student or any community member. So you're right, they do have a vested interest, but their interest is not their wallets as insinuated. It is wanting to set all students up for success and recognizing that in doing so, they set our community up for success as well. Please don't accept this false choice. And in fact, we don't even need to look beyond this campus to see that we don't live in an either-or community. Our students and educators both engage in a rigorous, quality education and support our community by building homes for those in need, by being active in our nursing homes and hospitals, and by organizing food drives and clothing drives, just to list a few. Thank you.
Jessica Sal, Richmond. In light of yesterday's events in Charahoe and fourteen districts across the state, big threat of violence in our schools, and then an hour later finding out about another shooting, I was thinking about, you know, solutions. And for me, the best solution is security and support from your community, whether it's your family, your school, your townspeople, your neighbors. And one of the things that recently happened in Richmond is that we hired a human services director. This was recommended by Wellness Committee, I think the third Wellness Committee that had studied the area of need in our community. And they recommended this position. And it's funded by ARPA money for three years. It's a three-year, sorry, three-year position, part-time, and they just hired someone last week. And so I'd love for everyone to be aware of this person, of this connection. I'd love for her to come speak. I would love to connect the school committee with all the other resources that we have, because there are a lot within twenty minutes, not a lot in Richmond necessarily. So that's it, just wanting to bring it up. It's important to everyone, I know, to all the parents, and especially the teachers and the staff in the schools that experienced that, that it was very scary, and we're all feel very fortunate that everyone's fine. So just wanting to bring up solutions and talk about holistic ways that we can provide security to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Okay, thank you.
Policy Item A, hazing policy. Policy Subcommittee members agree that having the law embedded in this policy will be beneficial. I recommend adoption of the hazing policy as revised after recommendations made during the first reading and agreement by the policy subcommittee.
There's been a motion by Ms. Luzon, a second by Mr. McQuade, to approve the new policy, hazing policy. Opens up for discussion or questions? Anybody have any? As Ms. Picard said, the Subcommittee actually looked at this twice, right? Yeah, so. Okay, so I'll take it to a vote. Those in favor? That looks like that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
And business item A, the Learning Outside Grant. I will ask Katie Kierkosian, she's in attendance tonight, to provide an overview. I am going to recommend approval to submit this grant request to the Rhode Island Department of Education School Building Authority for up to $100,000 for creation of outdoor classrooms and pollinator gardens across all eight schools. For all, it's actually seven.
There's been a motion in a second to accept the, I guess this is just Katie to submit the grant, right? Correct? Learning Inside Out Grant.
In your packet, there was Katie's overall slide. I could use your questions, then putting it behind us.
Katie, do you want to just take questions, or do you want to give us a little overview of?
I do have an overview.
Okay, thank you.
So good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present. Again, my name is Katie Kierkosian, and I am the Development Officer for the District. I'm here to discuss the District's proposed Learning Inside Out Grant submission and our Renew America Schools Grant submission. I'm going to be referring to slides that are in your packet as I talk through these two grants. As you see in Slide Two, the Learning Inside Out Grant is through RIDE School Building Authority Capital Fund. This is a district-wide request that would bring improvements to all of our schools with the goal of connecting Charahoe students to the natural environment. Our submission is due April third, and the amount that we can request is up to $100,000, as was already said. In terms of the big picture, this funding would allow the District to create various outdoor classrooms and pollinator pathways or gardens across our schools. In Slide Three, I offered some visions for outdoor classrooms at several of our schools. These include covered gazebos with patio and bench seating, improvements to existing outdoor classrooms, an outdoor theater and classroom space, a rain garden and recess walking path, a garden for our young adults with developmental delay at the high school, a sculpture garden with bench seating, and a frog and dragonfly pond. In Slide Four in your packet, I offered some inspirations for our gardens or pollinator pathways at our schools. These would include pollinator garden beds, a variety of pollinator plants indigenous to our region, bug and bee hotels, and bird feeders with cameras that could take digital photos and identify bird species for students to explore and discuss in age-appropriate ways, such as in their science classes. Also, to promote pollinators in safe and stable habitats and ecosystems, I've included hummingbird houses, nesting boxes, and bat boxes to be placed on all school grounds. That concludes what I had formally prepared to talk about with Learning Inside Out. My colleagues and I that have been working on this are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Polly, Ms. Hopkins?
I just had a small question. Can you utilize the Charahoe Woodshop Program to help build these structures, or do you have to go through a RIDE approved?
So that's a great question. I have spoke to Mr. Bannister about the potential for working, especially with some of his freshman and sophomore classes next year. And I wrote a cheat sheet, because that's not my area of expertise, but he said things like, you know, just learning how to, here we go. He said, oh, this is wonderful. They could learn about applications for tools and assembly, reading plans, reinforcing their math skills for layout, squaring up means, but sounds fascinating, geometry, trigonometry, assembly, et cetera. Some of these things would need to be reviewed by higher-level individuals at RIDE that understand some of the mechanics in terms of landscape needs and habitats. But the pollinator pathways, for example, are relatively simple kits. The bird nesting boxes are simple kits that those students could certainly, you know, flex their muscles and learn how to do some of those things.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, yes, Mr. Luzon?
I just want to remind people that we've done this in the past, where we approve something, and then we try to cut it in the future. So it says right here that ninety-one, so we vote yes, and they accept.
No, that's the next one. That's the next one. That's the next one. Save it for later. Okay, so I guess if there's no more questions for Katie, I'll take that to a vote. Those in favor of approving Katie submitting this grant? I think that's unanimous. Thank you.
The next grant is the Renew America Schools Grant. Katie's going to review this grant request as well. It's also in your slide deck. It is a grant request with Department of Energy for 4.685 million. Ninety-one percent would be funded by the Department of Energy and nine percent funded by the District for seven improvements across all seven schools that would improve the District's energy efficiency and air quality. The concept paper submitted by Katie was shortlisted from 1,000 applications nationally. I do recommend approval to submit this grant request. And just to note, the nine percent by the District is in our capital improvement plans already, so if you have questions for that, this is already part of our process.
There's been a motion in a second to approve the submission of the Renew America Schools Grant. Katie, you want to give us an overview, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So turning now to Renew America Schools. Said through the Department of Energy. And if you're having deja vu, this is because we have a pending energy class prize, which I presented last month with the DOE for $100,000, and we hope to hear on that application status sometime next month. Our submission is under Topic One, which is focused on high-impact energy efficiency and health improvements. This grant is due April 21st, and again, totals $4.685 million, which is the largest grant I've prepared under my tenure as the District's Development Officer. Of this, the Department of Energy would pay, again, roughly ninety-one percent of the cost of seven projects across all of the schools. These projects have been identified in the District that would improve our energy efficiency and indoor air quality. Charahoe's cost share would be just under nine percent, or 8.85% of the cost. As you see in Slide Six of your packet, these seven improvements include HVAC equipment replacement at CTC in Charleston Elementary, weatherization at all eight schools, skylight and indoor air quality improvements at the middle school, solar safety film at all eight schools, a new hot water boiler and storage tanks at CMS, ion generators and unit ventilators at all eight schools, and last but not least, updated HVAC controls at the high school, middle school, and Richmond Elementary. And all of these improvements in terms of a timeline would occur over FY '24, '25, and '26. We believe this would be an amazing opportunity for our District. It would provide cleaner, healthier air for our building occupants, improve our energy efficiency, as well as occupant safety and security, decrease our oil, gas, electricity, and water consumption, decrease our repair and maintenance costs, and decrease exposure to airborne particulate matter. And if funded, the District would again pay just nine cents on the dollar for these critical improvements. And that concludes what I'd like to share. Open to questions? Thank you.
Any questions for Katie? Okay, I'll take that to a vote. Those in favor of submitting this, I'm sorry, Donna?
I just wanted to comment, Katie. I remember a time we did not have you here to do these wonderful grants. Thank you so much for doing such a good job of recognizing the opportunities and putting together grants that you have been successful at. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Katie. Yes.
Ned, how much security would number four, the 3M solar safety film?
It would be a film that would both retain the glass integrity, as well as block out light, improving the energy efficiency. Based on what we reviewed for what just happened, can't say that it would prevent what just happened, but it may slow it down depending on the kind of film.
I'm not implying to prevent, I'm implying at least someone can't see in.
Correct.
Yep. It's an added level of deterrent.
So when we did the site assessments with the Chiefs of Police and our safety team, these were the recommendations. And actually, Chief Johnson and I had a conversation today regarding other enhancements that we have to think about based on new information as we get it.
So we wouldn't have teachers running around trying to get shade stuff?
Chief Johnson is actually going to come to our executive session.
Thank you.
Ready to take it to a vote? Okay, those in favor? That looks like that's unanimous, too. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Can I say something? I just want to thank all of you guys for being here tonight. Just your presence is very positive. I wish, and we appreciate it. So thanks for being here. Okay, so Consent Agenda Items. Sir, do you have anything, anyone needs anything pulled?
So Madam Chair, seeing no one's making them, asking to withdraw something. I make a motion to approve all the Consent Agenda Items, but before I do, I would like to acknowledge donations. One, donation from Earth Care Farm Charleston, Rhode Island, Jane Myrna Centipal, of 1.5 cubic yards of raised bed compost mix valued at $138 to the high school raised vegetable garden that will be maintained by Catherine Sagaman? Did I pronounce that right?
Sagaman.
ADL Environmental Awareness Class.
Thank you.
That's a motion.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second to approve the Consent Agenda Items. Those in favor? Looks like that's unanimous. Thank you so much.
At this time, we have no Subcommittee reports. For my Superintendent's report, we're going to update on strategic planning. We have spent all year developing a new strategic plan to submit in front of the school committee at May meeting. Our final stakeholder meeting is being held on Monday, April 3rd. So to date, we have sixty-five individuals involved in our strategic plan, and that does not incorporate all of our school improvement teams that have been meeting for school improvement teamwork. And the final sessions that happen after April, all of that feedback and input is taken into account and then finalized for your review at the May meeting. FY '24 budget reminders, we are asking our community to please make every effort to vote during the all-day budget referendum scheduled on Tuesday, April 4th, in your town of residence. Polling places are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and are located in the Charleston Town Hall, Hockington Town Hall, and Richmond Town Hall. And you can find our budget frequently asked question documents on our main website, along with all the other budget documents. I am excited to announce RSE is coming back. We have Friday night at seven o'clock, we will start with our Hundred Years of Broadway Chorus, and then we will move into Saturday, nine to three. That will be, that planning has displays of student artworks, student musical performances, drama. We are highlighting our Charahoe Tech Pathways, as well as activities with a focus on science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. There'll also be several community partners available to share available resources throughout our community. We hope everyone will come out and join us, for it to sure to be an outstanding day. And you can watch the promotional video and check out our poster on our website and our upcoming events. March 31st, Hope Rally School, Tommy James, The Magic of Books Assembly at 1:30. March 31st, March 31st, Ashway School, PTO Blow Dance, six to eight p.m. April 3rd, Hope Rally School, PTO Meeting, 6:30 p.m. in the library. April 4th, Charleston School, PTO, 6:00 p.m. Art Room and Zoom. April 5th, Hope Rally School Family Reading Night, six to seven p.m. in the gymnasium. April 5th, High School National Honor Society Ceremony, 6:00 p.m. Middle School Auditorium. April 5th, Middle School PTO Meeting, 7:00 p.m. in the library. April 6th, Secondary End of Grading Period, third quarter. April 7th, No School for Students and Staff. April 10th through the April 14th is our spring recess, no school, students, and school year staff. April 13th, Richmond School, PTO Meeting, 7:00 p.m. virtual. April 20th, High School Grade Nine Dental Screenings. April 20th, Class of 2024 Dodgeball Tournament, 2:30 p.m. High School Gymnasium.
Thank you, Superintendent Picard. School Committee, do you have any requests for future agenda items at this time? I guess not. Mr. Luzon? There's been a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting. Those in favor? And that looks like that's unanimous. Thank you so much.